And we are ready to start whenever you want to, boss.
All right.
Looks like it's about seven o'clock, so we may as well get started. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the City Council of the City of Prospect, Kentucky. Today is October 17th, 2022. Time is 7:00 PM. And the first order of business on the agenda is to consider the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, which was held on September 19th. There's a draft of those minutes was distributed. Are there any suggested additions or corrections?
I moved their approval.
One, as a motion to approve them, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is my report on city matters. It is as follows. First, the repaving of the City Hall parking lot has been completed, and most of the other work on the parking lot also is done. And also, the expanded parking lot is now paved and open for use. Second, MSD tells us that they expect the culvert work on Hunting Creek Drive to be conclude complete enough to reopen Hunting Creek Drive in about a week. It will be drivable, but the finished repaving will take longer. Third, the Metro Planning Commission's hearing on the proposed rezoning of Prospect Cove apartment proposal is set for tomorrow evening beginning at 6:30 at Kentucky Country Day. Printed notices of this have been hand-delivered to every household in Prospect. We've explored, or we had explored, having United Mail send postcards to all Prospect residents, but in spite of ample lead time, they could not do it until today, the 17th, at the earliest, and they wouldn't guarantee that, so that wouldn't have worked. So we hand-delivered those notices. I mean, I delivered 300 of them. Rover Potts is our lead attorney in this, at this hearing, and Chris Gorman, next to me, our city attorney, have been hard at work preparing for the hearing, and I think will make a good case in opposition. After the hearing, the Commission's recommendation will go to the Metro Council for their vote. But the evidence presented to the Planning Commission will be the entire factual record, both when it goes before the Metro Council, as well as in any subsequent court proceedings that may occur. So regardless of what the Commission concludes tomorrow night, presumably, the evidence presented at this hearing is critical for that reason. Fourth, and finally, the citywide election for Prospect's mayor and for the next city council will be three weeks from tomorrow. I think you all knew that. By the evening of November 8th, we will know who our next mayor will be, and probably who most or all of the next council members will be. The two candidates for mayor are council members Doug Farnsley and Sandra Leonard. Respect you all knew that. It is common to have two candidates for mayor. Once in 1990, the only time there were three candidates, in which no candidate won a majority. Nell Glass won that race with 40% of the vote. The other two candidates split the vote 30 to 30. And that's how that happened. The only person who has ever run for this office is Lonnie Falk, who ran unopposed three times. The council race, on the other hand, is very different and very unusual, because 11 candidates are running for six seats. There were 12 candidates before Sally Schneider had to withdraw. I believe this is a record number of council candidates. Two years ago, there were seven candidates for the six seats. And it may be the election right before that, that there were only six candidates for six seats. And believe it or not, there were yard signs. I don't know why, but, you know. What all this tells me is there currently is strong interest in city policy, because it's the city council, not the mayor. City council makes city policy. And there seems to be a strong interest in that this time. Those are my comments, and without further discussion, I'm going to move into Commission Board reports. I don't think Mr. Embry is here, so is there anyone else here for the Ethics Commission? I don't believe so. We'll move into the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Linda Wardell is back.
Before Linda talks, is there any reason for having an Ethics Commission? I mean, normally their work is done by now, pretty much for the year.
I mean, is there a subject matter?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Well, with John not being here, I don't know that there is.
Did he put it on the agenda?
No.
No, we just put it on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda?
It is on the agenda. He thought he might have some on the report, but.
No, he doesn't.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Linda.
Parks and Recreation Committee report. There's a lot of stuff going on in the parks these days. The Little Hunting Creek Playground equipment has been installed, as I'm sure you've all seen driving by. The next step is to spread out those piles of gravel that you see around the base of the of the playground equipment, and then there will be a poured rubber surface installed. And once that's ready, and the other construction in the park is complete, the playground will be open for community use, so that will be a happy day. The first annual youth craft project will take place this Saturday in Harrods Creek Park from 10 to 11:30. And we know that we have some some children have been signed up for this event. There's still room for more. They will be meeting at the picnic tables in the park, and each child is asked to bring a parent or responsible adult to accompany them. And the program is being led by Sally Snyder, one of our Parks Committee members, and her cousin Lauren Decker, who has a lot of experience working with children and is a fantastic artist. So I know the projects will be wonderful. The invasive plant removal in the parks is ongoing. Vines and invasive plants have been removed in the area between Timber Ridge Drive and the Putney Pond Dam, and that's made quite a a terrific impact there. There were a lot of, a lot of very large vines that were killing the trees. In Putney Pond and Woodlands, invasive plant removal has been completed along the pond banks and also along the trail. If you're familiar with the trails, there's a swing overlooking the pond, and then the trails that go from there to the Scout Boardwalk, Eagle's Way Boardwalk. They've also gone back and done some additional invasive plant removal in Harrods Creek Park, primarily between the orange and the blue trails, and between the parking lot and, and the Blue Trail, Parking Lot Road and the Blue Trail. They worked a couple of days last week, and, and there it's getting a little bit late in the season for foliar spring, so we may save the rest of the days for the spring. We have two new foot bridges along the Blue Trail in Harrods Creek Park. These replace some very rudimentary foot bridges with bridges that now, they're a little sturdier. They've got handrails. We really think it enhances the safety and accessibility of the trails, so that, that's a great improvement. The Harrods Creek Bridge Project is now in the bid stage. The bid opening will take place on October 31. So hopefully, we'll have some good bids for that project and be able to award a contract. And the next item is, the Scouts are back. We have quite a bit of interest in Eagle Projects. We have a couple of projects that have been completed and some that are in progress. We revamped the mile, the trail mileage markers along the Orange Trail in Harrods Creek Park. Some of the markers were lost because of flooding. Some of them got kind of put back in the wrong place. So we've had a scout come back, remeasure it, put new posts in where they were needed. And he's ordered the mileage markers that will be installed on those posts. We also, a couple of Scout projects included moving the connector trail between the Harrods Creek Parking Lot and the Blue Trail. We had a trail that was quite eroded, a lot of exposed tree roots. They shifted that trail a little bit, put gravel down to minimize erosion. And then there was another spot along the Blue Trail that they also put gravel down and moved it slightly. So that's, that's great. They will be more sustainable trails there. And an upcoming Eagle Project will replace the very first bridge that we constructed, the Scout constructed in Putney Pond and Woodlands. That was our very first bridge, and we weren't as smart as we are now. We, I think we used pressure-treated wood instead of the cedar that we use now. I think the wood was a little thinner than what we use now, and over time, it's just deteriorated. So we will be moving that bridge very slightly, and then connecting it back to the paths.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was more than 12 years ago.
Yes.
So, yeah. So, upcoming events, the Harrods Creek Trail Bash will happen again this year. The date is Sunday, November 20th at 8:30 in the morning. The people sign up by going to runsignup.com. We've got a great website, and just search for Harrods Creek Trail Bash. I went on the site. I'm not running, but I went on the site to make sure that was working. There are 10K and 5K options for the race itself, and there's also a chill cook-off that participants, participants can contribute to, or anyone that is interested in providing a pot of chili for the runners to have after they finish racing. That's much appreciated. And the final thing I wanted to mention is that we've had a lot of people ask if we could have bird walks in the parks. And we've had, since the McCallisters moved out of Prospect years ago, we haven't really had someone that, that would really organize those. But I've been in touch with the Beckham Bird Club, and they have bird walks all over the place. And they notified me that they've got three walks scheduled in the Prospect area. Two of them are at the Garvin Brown Preserve in Hayes Kennedy Park. Those are Sunday, October 30th, and Saturday, December 10th. And then on Sunday, November 13th, they will be in Harrods Creek Park, and they're going to meet in the parking lot at 8:30. If anyone's interested, you can go to the Beckham Bird Club website and just click on, what did I say here, events and activities, and all their listing of bird walks will come up, and they even have phone numbers of the person that's leading them, and more detailed information about where to meet up. So, that's all I have for parks. Any questions?
I guess not, Linda. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, a report on the US Highway 42 Safety Study. Herb Scholinger, is that you?
Okay. This is what's happening on the improvements for, safety improvement for US Party 2. The working group met with Larry Chaney and Tom Paul, KYTC. That's the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And these gentlemen have been our liaison through the whole planning study, this year-long planning study. And we want to meet with the, meet with them for a couple of reasons. One, we had heard that they made applications for a major part of a project. It's listed fact, it's the Priority One project. And we want to know where that stood. Well, they reported, this, they reported that in September, they made application to Kipta for this project. It's from Harrods Creek Bridge to River Row. This actually is a continuation of an older project. And so that's, their application went in earlier because it was a existing project. Their, this project will be based on the design concepts that were created in the planning study, and the project is the Priority One in the planning study. The scope of this project is roundabouts, Timber Ridge, Fox Harbor, River Row, in River Row, sidewalks in this area, and street lighting in this area, and I'll describe in a little bit, little bit more detail later. The good news, or maybe it's a, really, the great news is KYTC will pay the 20% match that the local, the local public agency typically for projects that are funded through Kipta are responsible. The City of Prospect is not responsible for any cost, and this is a little bit less than a third. It's about a $13 million estimated project cost. That includes design, acquisition, utility, relocation, and construction. The the, Kipta has a, we've been told, and Greg represents the working group by being involved in monthly meetings with Kipta, that this is a a year that they have a large sum of money to award. So KYTC will make, in November, will make the announcement of the award. So it's, it's not a done deal. I will admit that our fellows that we work with, with the state there are very optimistic, so. The second part of what we wanted to meet with Mr. Chaney, Mr. Hall, was to sort of look at other aspects in, in the planning study that a big part of is the, they listed three priorities, and I've talked about the Priority One, and many items in Priority Two, is we would like for the prospects that make application for. And I will admit, what I'm going to present can be very confusing. And so, the method I thought, because we're talking about a lot of different intersections in this two and a half mile. So I took it upon, and of course, I'm a very graphic-oriented person, since I made a living with graphics. Anything else? I'm going to ask a little bit of help from Don, who's always a friend. So Don's up here. It, Gene Snyder.
Hey, Herb.
Yes.
You need a microphone, buddy.
Okay.
Can the audience see this too?
Can you flip it around?
Any release?
We probably know it up here, if the audience would listen.
I don't know. I saw somebody's green mirror at Boulevard. Maybe people don't know. Okay. 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 Here's where we start. Sorry. Here we are, at Gene Snyder, US 42. We're getting ready to come down the hill. Bridge Point. Okay. We'll come down to Harrods Creek Overlook. We'll come down to the bridge, Harrods Creek Bridge. We got the next big intersection, just Timber Ridge, right here. We'll sweep up here. Here's City Hall, right here. The new parking lot isn't shown. The Fox Harbor, River Row. Everything in yellow is primary, it's Priority One. And really, Prospect has nothing really to say on that at this time. You know, this is strictly KYTC's project. There'll be definitely public hearings if it's awarded and all that. So Priority Two, gonna have to give a few notes. And I will admit, any priorities, we didn't, board group didn't, some of the items, we, we, we have exceptions with. So the one thing, the, in this Priority Two, was dynamic dynamics, warning signage, which could tell if someone is coming down 42, and if someone's at the intersection of Bridge Point. Also is, is lighting from Bridge Point Boulevard to the Harrods Creek Bridge. And in the study, it, it, it talked about very high mast lighting. We do not support that in any way, shape, or form. We do support lighting. In fact, we hope the kind of lighting is the lighting, because we support lighting, really, in the whole strip till we get to Ennis Brook, Hunting Creek. That would be basically the same kind of lighting, which would be attractive, and there'd be lighting gear to illuminate the highway and to definitely take in to, to be downward light. Okay. The third thing of, in, in in this Priority Two, and rumble strips on the highway, which basically, we were hearing, if they do a resurfacing, that almost becomes a standard. But anyway, we, we, we think it's good to put out that we think it needs to happen. The extension of the guardrails up to the height that they need to be to meet standards that they're really safe. And also, narrowing the lane, the, there's a stretch of that, coming down that steep hill that's 12 feet, and what we've heard from transportation highway engineers, that it, to narrow it, will, will slow people down. So that is the, the Priority Two. The items that we would like Prospect to make application for. Okay? It will come down here, okay, to River Row. Now, that's, that's the end of KYTC's concern as far as the project that they made application for. We, we and, and I will say, the reason I, that they made the Priority One, this is a great number of accidents have happened in that area. That, the Planning Study book has gone in great detail to describe what is the history been as far as safety or unsafety, really, in this stretch of the highway. There's so many left turns. So in this, in this area, we propose left turn, a green mirror to go into Southernland, a left turn lane into Ennis Brook, Southernland Farm Road, and a left turn into, into Hunt, into Hunting Creek going west. Okay? And then at Rose Island Road, also, there's a left turn. That, that priority also had other modifications, and we didn't feel that that is one that we, we needed. That's more of a KYTC concern, we thought, so.
Herb, when you say left turn, I assume what you're talking about is, is a separate lane for a left turn. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And actually, in all the areas, only area any acquisition would be, in, in the green, all that additional lane would be within the existing right-of-way. There's no need to acquire any land. In, in the KYTC, at the roundabouts, there's a, there's a portion that there would be a need for some land acquisition, but it's not a a major amount, so.
Herb, was there any discussion of making it a straight, straight shot from Hunting Creek to Ennis Brook, moving the Ennis Brook entrance at all?
Yes, there was concern, but after going through it, I mean, they felt that the, the amount of traffic really didn't merit that, the amount of costs it would be, so.
Who is they?
Okay, we, we, the City Prospect consultant with, or hired the consultant, QK4, yes.
So that was QK4's recommendation?
Yes, right. And I think the other, well, the other aspect is the conservation easement and environmental concern of trying to, the reality of getting approval, kind of, think that into it. I mean, but this planning study is just a tool. I mean, I, I hope this, there's other items in there that have a lot of good merit. And the, they can be implemented in the future, and it just could be other items, you know, added to it, for making a safer road, so. So let's see.
Does Priority Three include a roundabout at River Row at M42?
Sandra, I didn't hear that. Please.
I understand that the two Priority One roundabouts are Timber Ridge and Fox Harbor. Is that right?
Well, actually, all three are in the priority.
In the first one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Now, the one thing about it is that the River Row would wouldn't, wouldn't have to be implemented if the other two. But if those two, and I feel the same in that Priority One, there will be a median created, so there won't be so many abilities, turn left, and so many different driveways into the commercial property. Now, the, it'll be open to car haul for, and also with, with the roundabout, where you can turn around and get back to the other side of the road easier. No, they're four-lane. Yeah, but there is, this is a highway designed for, for trucks. So the design would have to, would, you know, would work with large trucks. Let me ask you, I am going to ask for questions, but we have, we have found out that, you know, Kipta will consider many applications. Thank you, gentlemen. You know, they represent, I think it's five Kentucky counties and three Indiana counties, so. And we've learned in our experience, this three-year experience of the work, of the working group, that other agencies are very interested in giving funds. And we don't know if in future years, if they will have the kind of funds that they currently have right now. The application is due for new projects, and that's what this would be considered, is the end of October. And we, we think this is like, just a fantastic, great opportunity for Prospect to to make application for a much safer, you know, man. This is our main street, pretty much. You have to use our main street in, in pretty much all neighborhoods, so. What we're really asking is okay to apply. And we will prepare, the working group will prepare the application if, if we get the okay. So could I answer any questions? And we will prepare, the working group will prepare the application if we get the okay. So could I answer any questions?
You say if we get the okay, you talk about transportation.
I'm talking about.
KYTC?
Gentlemen and ladies, ladies right there say we can make that case.
So we're talking about priorities two and three, correct?
Yes. Yes.
And do we have a?
Well, it's not complete, but you know, there's some exceptions.
Do we have any idea how much our 20% would be?
It could be between 600,000 and 630,000.
And that would be both two and three?
Yes.
And how many years would that be over?
It would probably be over three to four years.
Any other question? What would be the framework for the construction period? From today?
Now, which project are you talking about?
All of them. I mean, if you start today and you go through.
Priority one is between a five and seven year. Property. What we've learned is KYTC can tell the utility companies to move the utilities. But the utilities companies move them when they want to move.
Or not.
No, they have to move because they're in that right way and they control. But so that, that's the eagerness. I mean, one thing came out, they're moving. Okay, there's a project. At the Old County line going up to Ridgemore. Almost Hillcrest, well, excuse me, going up to, we definitely way into Old County. And utilities are being relocated in that part. So I mean, it's, there's a possibility in that concept is when they do it, they just start, you know, continue with relocation.
What about phase two, phases two and three?
Priorities two and three?
Yeah.
Those are much, much shorter because we really no acquisition. And I don't, I really think any utility relocation is pretty bad.
So that, so these priorities are parallel. They're not consecutive.
Well.
That was my question too. Would they all go on at the same time?
Well, if each of them gets, you know, if they're all successfully, they could, they could carry on. Yes. Yeah.
And, but Kentucky Transportation Cabinet would make that decision.
Well, they're, they're off and rolling. Okay. I mean, really, they could, I mean, the design, it would make sense if they could get really, and it could make really some feasibility, I think costly. You know, in all cases, firms, engineering firms have to be interviewed and then decided, you know, that's, that's the thing. So.
So, so are you saying that the Kentucky Transportation Department is responsible for priority one, we'd be responsible for two and three? Is that? Okay.
But it would be like the planning study. We'd be working with them.
Right.
I understand.
Priority one, I mean, they, they said we, you know, what they got from the planning study, public hearings that, that they see that residents, the prospect are are behind, you know, the concept, design concepts.
You said there was no land acquisition for two and three, but there was for one.
Yeah.
Where is the acquisition in?
Right at the roundabouts. It's where the roundabouts will take on both sides of the road. It takes a little bit of land. I think I heard total. It is a half an acre total. In, in all the three roundabouts. Actually, River Road. No, River Road is some movement acquisition.
That would probably displace Fox Harbor. And the landings. So will Kipta replace those?
That would be part of scope of work. Yeah.
Herb, today you're asking, you're asking for, for permission to move forward with the application to Kipta?
Yes.
For phase one, for phase two and three?
Well, not phase one. It's.
No, I corrected.
Yes, sir.
And that doesn't, that doesn't mean at this time, any commitment of funds.
That's correct.
So Kipta would have to, would Kipta would have to approve the application. That would happen sometimes in 2023?
No, they'll, they'll make a decision at the end of November.
Okay.
Yeah.
When would, when would be the first time that we would, we would need to allocate money?
Probably, okay, in November. Probably mid 2023.
So would this fiscal year?
Yeah, it would probably be mid. I mean, it, it would be, if things, I mean, you have to, the first bit of cost would be the engineering. And it takes something just like we did the plan, say advertised, interviewed, and then they make selection. And they don't get paid just when they're hired. They get paid after they do something.
The allocation doesn't mean cash on the barrelhead at that point.
That's right.
Yeah. So it could move into the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Easily. I mean, the expenditure of funds could move in, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it sounds like it could also move over three to four years by the time it was completed.
Yeah. All right. Can I?
You can. It's not on the agenda as an action item.
Well, we need to make it an action item because of deadline. Can I make that motion myself? Would that be all right? Or could Herb do that?
No, you, you need to.
What's proper speaker? Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that, but I would like to move that the council approve. Priorities two and three from the study. There are some exceptions in there that we're going to tweak a little bit. So that we could go ahead and make application by the deadline of the end of this month.
Yeah, actually, what we'll be doing is authorizing the creation of the application.
Right, yeah.
I'll second that.
And submit it. Thank you.
Correct.
Not creation and submit it of the application.
Okay. I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion about that? Hearing note, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Maybe we'll do a roll call.
Okay. Leonard, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Farnesley, aye.
Hildsmann, aye.
Volker, aye.
Zodril, no.
I'd do one. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Last report is a report on the library.
The library is, is doing very well. We've survived COVID. And we're going to have our used book sale October 28th and 29th. We have a lot of newer books this time. People during COVID cleaned out their closets and their libraries. And so our last sale had a lot of older books. Anyway, we hope that you'll, we'll take donations anytime City Call is open and we hope you'll come. Our, our sales are from 9:5 on Friday and Saturday, the 28th and 29th.
All right. Thank you. Police report, Jeff.
Hey, we're lucky again, very slow month. Actually, just a couple of reports were taken that were any significance. We had a theft report that involved computer access to an individual bank account. It was a phishing scam that got into their personal PNC account to the tune of over $15,000 unfortunately. It was a rare. A rare type of phishing scam, but that's the only one we've had like that. And we had a theft of the catalytic converter off of the car in a subdivision, which is pretty rare because normally those things happen in parking lots where you get a number of cars. Where they'll be in the middle of several cars and they'll crawl in between them and then they cut them off. Because usually you do it like a sawzall, which makes a little bit of noise. So for it to happen in the subdivision is a little unusual. But it was just one car and that's the only one we've had in 11 years I've been here. And I do know that LMPD did catch a group of people that were doing that last week. So I don't know if it had anything to do with the one we have. But those people were caught doing it in the middle of a parking lot, like a car lot. There is a lot of money involved in that when you do that. Top dollar. In terms of the monthly stuff, the house watches again are down. And I think that, and just going back and look at it, I think it's a reflection on the economy being so bad. People just aren't traveling. Everybody's staying at home. And it really started back all the way in February and March. Since then, every month has been really dense. And when these guys go out, we give them a printout of all the people that are on vacation. And there's times that this thing can be 14, 15 pages long. And right now, I did the printouts the other day and it's four pages. So nobody's leaving, nobody's going anywhere. I guess they came forward to. So that's a little unusual. So those numbers dropped and last year, believe it or not, was a record year. So it's unusual now, but after years going up, 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 this year, everything is going down. So. It's a little weird. But other than that, I really don't have much, not a lot going on.
I have to tell you, just like many other people sitting at this table, I've been walking and knocking on all the doors of the people of Prospect. And the single most important thing to everybody is our police force and how effective they are. And I, I have not heard any negative comments in any way, shape or form. We listen to the TV and everybody hates the cops, right? Not here in Prospect. They love the cops.
Appreciate that, but we get along with everybody here. I mean, we hear the same stuff too. I know that guys everywhere else, they take a beating, but they are pretty well appreciated here. And we hear that pretty regularly. And, you know, if you stop in the lower, if you stop in one of the restaurants, I mean, we hear it from everybody too. So. It's a good place to work.
Well, that.
There's usually cookies and cakes and all sorts of stuff.
I haven't had any in over two months. I just wanted to point out that I'm a good boy. The rest of these slugs upstairs.
And no unfinished business. Another new business, we have a request for a variance, which is on the agenda that you all have. Is there someone here that wants to speak to that? I'm listening.
Hello, I'm creating a gate at the bottom of my driveway and I guess the metro limit.
Ma'am, could you first tell us who you are?
Oh, sorry. Stacy Grossfeld. I live right off of Covered Cove Way in the states of Hunting Creek. And we are putting, we'd like to put a gate at the bottom of my driveway. But the maximum height for the columns near the gate can only be six feet. So I was requesting a variance at 7.5 feet. So a foot and a half higher than what the, the limit is.
I have a question.
I was going to say, somebody should have a question.
Right, right off the bat, are you in the estates? HOA, I didn't think you were.
We're not in the HOA.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we're still in the estates of Hunting Creek, but I guess that was annexed after the HOA was set up and we never got pulled into it. So there's about six houses on my street and none of us are in the HOA. I, I didn't realize that till.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Restriction if they had HOA restrictions. So, so you wouldn't be a part of that.
No, I reached out to the president of the HOA and he, he was like, you're not even in the HOA. So you can do whatever you want. The reason I'm requesting it is we have a, it's a four plus acre lot and my house is a fairly large footprint. And it's a long driveway and our neighbors are kind of far apart from us. So I don't think it would be an eyesore. We worked with an architect to do the design for the, the gate, for the entrance. And he had suggested it seven and a half feet versus six, just based on our driveway and the footprint of the house. And the size of the lot.
Did he have access to our documents? Did he have access to the ordinances? It's unusual for an architect or an engineer not to have access to that type of documentation when they're doing a design.
So he did, he, he's the one that told me it was six feet was the limit. And we, we actually were styling this entrance off of John Conti's property, who lives in Indian Hills. So I had gone to his house and kind of measured his columns and his was right around seven and a half feet. And that entrance looked very nice. And that was, so I was like, well, do you think we could? I know it's at six feet for Prospect. And he said, well, it's six feet unless you apply for variance. So that's when I was like, well, maybe I'll just ask to see if we get it to seven and a half feet.
The written presentation is very helpful. Thank you for that with the photographs and drawings.
Thank you.
John? So. I agree with Mr. Farnesley. I think it's, it's a beautiful plan. It's complimentary. And I've driven the road several times, but recently since receiving this, I drove again. And there are other homes on that street that have something similar.
Yes.
This will be really, really nice looking and very attractive, I think, to your home. I read the ordinance. It's ordinance 152 decimal zero two, if anybody's interested. And I had to ask myself, what is the definition of a fence? And this doesn't look like a fence to me. This looks like an entrance gate. A fence, I guess it could be argued, could be other things, but typically it separates properties or it's a boundary around a property or, you know, that's what we think of. And when I read the ordinance, it says freestanding wall or fence. So to me, the word or conjunction, comparing two things. So it'd be like you or me, both people. But there's, they're different, but it still means kind of the same thing in general. So to me. This is an offense. But I'm no attorney. And so I'm trying to interpret this law that was written years ago. So that's what I'm struggling with is.
It says fence or freestanding wall, as you pointed out. So it would be one or the other.
Well, or, or maybe neither is what I'm saying. So what I see, Chris, is a little farther down, it talks about.
Did you say neither?
Yeah. In other words, this would be neither. This.
This would be a gate and stuff either.
She's proposing would be neither.
Okay, I think it's freestanding wall, but.
But. But if you, here's my logic. I know you're attorney, I shouldn't be arguing with you, but. So later on in that ordinance, it talks about the number of feet between a residence and the property or the number of feet between some kind of a border in the property. So to me, that's, that ordinance is all about a fence. To me, it says, it's trying to define a fence. This isn't doing any of that. This is supporting a gate that she wants to put across her driveway. So in my humble way of thinking of it, it doesn't fit the definition of fence or freestanding wall. To me, this is something totally different. So that's.
You ask me my thought on it?
Yes.
My thought on it is the resident has done everything in their power to try to do what's necessary to be able to build exactly what her neighbors had. And they, we've previously approved it, whether or not they did it as a fence or a freestanding wall, whatever. But I, I think everybody here understands that it will enhance their property and the property of Prospect. And I'm not really sure why we're arguing about it.
Well, if it's not a fence or a freestanding wall, there's no variance that is required for her to do it.
Yeah, we don't need a variance. But I suggest we make a determination, one way or the other, so that.
I would think you would want to pass a variance in order to protect.
I think.
Homeowner. You know, we could have the interpretation and a variance is not necessary, then the next council comes up and says, well, you needed a variance and you didn't get one. So I would think out of that abundant caution, that you ought to go ahead and pass and, well, whatever you want to do, you're, you're in the council. I would either vote for the variance or against it. And of course, I would go for it.
I went back there today and there you have a number of neighbors who do have nice looking cast iron fences with, with columns who meet our criteria. And one of the, one of the statements in the, in the ordinances that, and I'm paraphrasing, it's consistent with the neighborhood, something, something like that. This would not be. Because they're very, they're similar back, back there. I, and we, we've made an effort, as long as I've been on council to. In the event. That there's something like this. that there's something like this that would come up, a variance, if, if, if it is something that should be done, uh, instead of a variance, we would correct the ordinance. We did that in the case of the Dairy Queen who asked for a variance on seven feet. Well, this going from six to seven feet as, as a uh, a visual barrier to the dumpsters, which, which benefits the entire community. Uh, this is, this is an individual uh, situation, although, you know, I think it's a very good presentation and I think it looks nice. I would, I would not be in favor of a variance of a, of the ordinance. I, I think that six feet is just fine because your neighbors have that and it looks very nice where they are. Those are nice homes. Uh, if this were, as you, as you presented, uh, if this were proximate to your house, you know, you, you've made a, made a point of stating that um, you want it because of columns of the house are similar to this and this is similar to columns of the house. Is that correct?
It's just a large footprint house.
Well, I know, I see it. I see it all the time. Uh, and it's, it's.
Number four, golfing.
So, but anyway, that's, I'm not in favor of variances unless they're very specific. Um, overall benefits to the community and I don't think this qualifies as that.
This is different than my, my neighbors who just have single columns with one fence. Um, so like Dr. Nguyen's um, her, her entrance on either end of her driveway. This is more of a whole build where it's the columns, there's the, the gate, and then it extends out eleven feet on both sides and then it kind of wraps around towards the road. So it's a, it's a little different than what is on that screen currently.
As Chris said, it's a freestanding wall or several, several freestanding walls divided by a gate.
It's under, it's under the fence ordinance though. So I think it gets in under the fence.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor? I move, I move that we approve the variance that's been requested. It's a lovely home and a lovely plan and I think it's appropriate. So that's my motion.
Is there a second? A second?
Yeah, I, I, I too drove back and I, I can see why you would like to have the gate. Uh, but uh, you know, when I looked at this, it, it, I like the plan, but i- is there a problem uh, changing the columns back to conform to a, a six foot column rather than a seven and a half foot?
Well, when you look at the elevations with the, with the width of the whole project and when, when you kind of look at the base of the driveway and you kind of look up this big hill, it just looks too short. That, that was the reason for, you know, to, to go higher on just those two columns. And then, then it drops down to, I think it's five feet for, for the rest of the structure. So it's just the two columns where the, the fence connects. Um, just because it's such a long driveway and we don't have, you know, that we have trees, but they're kind of about twenty feet off on either side of the driveway. So it just looks off, for lack of a better description.
The whole project is roughly thirty feet? Is that correct?
Correct. So it's about sixteen feet, the drop is sixteen feet across and then it's um, like eleven feet on one side, then eleven on the other. So it's actually closer to forty feet, the whole, that whole width area.
And only the columns would be the seven and a half?
Yes. And then the rest of the structure drop, drops down to, I believe it's five feet is what's listed. Yeah.
Uh, John, uh, thank you, John. Um, Ms. Grossfeld, so um, I think all of us realize that this is attractive and we want you to have it. What we're dealing with up here is not anything you have, you can control. We're, we're working with the law. We're trying to interpret the law and make sure it's right. So historically, we have not wanted to grant variances because over time, if we did that frequently, that would take away from the law. So we shy away from doing that. Uh, that's why I was trying to uh, call it something else. If it is something else, then the law doesn't fly. You can do it. The other thing that I, I think was, was interesting is uh, what Frank brought up is that um, and, and it might take a while, but maybe this is the time for us to go back and look at that ordinance and better define what it says on there uh, to maybe specifically address an entrance gate and whether that is or is not a fence. So I just wanted to say that.
Council, he has been, this is why the public really gets frustrated with government. I mean, here, here's a resident that's trying to do everything in the world to comply with the rules and regulations. And about what we have currently done tonight, you're putting them in a position where if they perceive they'll violate the law. Uh, and that's just not a good position to be in. So.
Well, if, if we.
I'm just the council. You're, you're, you've got to go down.
No, you're, you're. If, if she actually just made the column and then just changed the grade of the ground to come up where that column will show six feet, would you guys be happy with that?
Well, that would meet the definition of six feet.
It would be six feet? Yeah. So that's what I would do. I would change the, just make a burn off the driveway and make, make a break up.
But Richard, Richard, I'll quote, I'll quote a famous president of the estates that, you know, why have, uh, why have rules if we're not going to follow them? So, and there's uh, there's procedures where we can change this thing, but it, but I'm not in favor of variances. I go along with Greg. If we, if we have a bad ordinance, we need to address the bad ordinance. But this is an individual situation. It's not something that carries over to the community at all, at least in my opinion. Although it's very nicely, but nonetheless, it's still uh, it's still a variance and I don't think it's warranted.
Can I go back to Chris? Uh, greatly respect your opinion. Uh, you're our city attorney. So I hear you calling this a freestanding wall.
I think it's either or. Uh, you know, I, again, I, I think you're hammering silly, but I, I think this lady has tried to comply in the best way they know how. And I think Prospect should do everything that can to accommodate its residents when they go above and beyond to try to uh, improve their property for the benefit of, not only themselves, but all the residents of Prospect.
No, no argument there. I couldn't agree more with what her actions have been superlative. But um, my issue is if this is a freestanding wall, then is how does that differ from a fence? So is this really?
What do you want to definition?
No, I just.
What's your question?
I'm, I'm wondering, to me, when I read the ordinance, one detail too, uh, it's talking about something that goes around a yard or separates two yards. To me, it's not talking about an entrance gate. I was wondering what your professional opinion.
Okay, I guess, yeah.
You gave it.
My professional opinion is that uh, what the lady has asked for a variance, most of any stuff, you think within the ordinance. And if, you know, if I had a vote, I would go for it, but you don't, you have to vote.
Now, don't. So Dr. Chris Feld, there's an election in three weeks and there'll be at least two of us who won't be here on the council on January first. And it may be that there's even greater changes than that. So you may want to take a trip to Florida and come back on January first.
Okay, thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, next on the agenda is resolution, proposed resolution. Uh, four dash twenty twenty-two. Uh, has to do with resolving, discerning the Prospect Code, closed department development. And uh, we ask if you all see the proposed resolution. Uh, would anyone like to start us off by making a motion to adopt it? No? You haven't read it yet?
Who authored this?
Uh, who did?
Uh, Groger sent me a copy of a nearly identical resolution that you all passed or the council passed in two thousand sixteen. I'm not sure who drafted it.
And is it his plan to make this part of the record at the public hearing tomorrow?
No, I think that's how it appeared last time.
I, I move we, I'm, I move we approve this resolutions.
Is there any, one on the second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. It's our discussion.
I'd like to make an emotion for an amendment.
That's in order.
I completely support the majority of this thing and been active in providing these situations. However, I don't think it's appropriate at this time to include the um, the last character, which says, be it also resolved by the city council, the hundred fifty thousand dollars be set aside from unallocated Prospect reserves. Uh, I think that is premature at this moment.
It's precedent where I've done it before.
We did it before. That's correct. And this is.
And I will let you know that uh, we're out of money for fighting LG.
Thanks, Jim.
There's a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget. Uh, is that not this hundred fifty thousand?
There is not a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, Dale. Uh, that money's been spent on legal fees for LG already.
Already this year?
Yeah, we've got maybe ten or twelve thousand left.
No, I didn't get September's uh, uh, numbers for some reason, but uh, going back to August, there's, there was something like a hundred and twenty thousand spent on this already this year? I didn't realize that we had taken any action on it to this.
I believe in the current fiscal year, we have, well, I know we have used up, it was a hundred thousand, as I recall, that had been allocated to this in the budget and.
I didn't realize we had had any legal expenses on this this.
We've had a lot. I mean, they've been posting people from one side and down the other. They've taken me two entire times, two days, and I've got to go back for a third day. They've taken Frank, they've taken Sandra, I think they've taken Greg.
So, so you're saying the, the actual expenditure is likely to be three hundred thousand this year?
No, it's gonna be.
Actually.
I know that. It would be. Excuse me, Sandra, Grover's spending a lot of time right now uh, getting ready for the hearing tomorrow night. Putting our presentation up. He's hired some experts. Uh, we're trying to beat this thing and that's what he's, that's what he's up to. And he succeeded last time, Metro Council, based upon the record that he made at the planning commission. So uh, it's very costly. LDG is a very, very wealthy, big company. They don't care. I mean, it's like three and four motor company. So that's where the money goes. And it's not, it's not up to me, it's up to you all, whether you want to do something or not. I'm just giving you information.
I think if we're opposed to this project, and I believe we are, we need to pay for the expense of opposing it. And um, I, I support the uh, resolution as presented. We've got a motion to amend it. I don't think that's been seconded. So let's see if there's a second and let's.
You know, you're right. It's my fault.
No, it was seconded.
Or was it? I apologize. I understand.
Seconded.
I seconded the original motion.
No, the, the.
Amendment.
Heard by Frank.
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
Okay. So now we're discussing.
Well, it sounds like the hundred and fifty thousand is part, the, the one in this thing is already just about expended itself.
No.
No.
No. How much do we owe the law right now? It's not anywhere near, maybe sixty, I think.
So roughly half of it.
That much?
I think so, with that last bill we did. Yeah, that's right. It's maybe just under sixty-five.
And that doesn't include tomorrow night?
No.
That's the last.
No, this is part of.
No, tomorrow night's gonna be expensive.
Well, I said, when I said, I said, I felt this was premature. I don't, I'm not uh, against it completely, but uh, the upcoming election is going to have a very sound impact depending upon what the Metro uh, election turns out.
You're talking about the mayor?
I'm talking about the mayor and mayor's ability to appoint boards. We might be facing a considerably different situation uh, after the, after the election. That's why I think this is premature to commit the money. I think the words that we say here are terrific and we all feel the same way that we're vote, we are opposed to this thing. And there's no question that we're going to spend money on lawyers. However, I think that the, the appropriate approach would be to amend the budget. Have a, have a budget amendment that puts this in there and not, not just a resolution. I think that's.
It'd be fine.
That's would be proper procedure.
But actually, if we do a budget amendment, and I, I'm not opposed to that at all, I think that also we have to be realistic. We, we were successful before and the makeup of the Metro Council was significantly different than it is now. Um, there are many more people on the Metro Council who will vote for this affordable housing than were there before. Last time, all of the Republicans voted against it and there were a number of Democrats who voted against it, five. The chances of that happening again are not very good. The, the change that will take place at Metro possibly is a different mayor and incorrect. The mayor can change boards, but this will have already gone through the planning commission and the mayor cannot change who's on the Metro Council, which is the next step. I, I, I don't have trouble with the concept that this is premature. I agree with that. I also agree that this affordable housing complex does not benefit Prospect in any way because it's way too large. And I think that part of this has got, I, I agree, I guess, with Frank. Part of this has got to play out further before we can make a prudent economic determination.
You're, you're, respectfully, you're incurring the expense and we don't have the funds to pay the lawyers. So with the bills that we're going to be receiving, so you, you can uh, take that out, but you're gonna have, we're gonna have to pay our bill at some point.
No, I, I agree. And, and at that point in time, though, it's not a resolution. We're not making a stand. We're changing the budget because we need to, to pay our bills.
Let, let me say something uh, since, I guess it involves my pocketbook, but um, the bulk of this will go to uh, by turning cones and not to me. I, I don't do this job for money. Uh, I give every cent that I make over the, taxes uh, to students for scholarships. Uh, so it, it really, I'm not speaking for myself. I, I, I really don't care what you do in regards to, to me. But what I do think you miss here is that it looks weak. It looks weak. Uh, that Prospect is not ready to stand and be counted this time, just like it was last time. Um, that's how I see it, but you, again, you all have the votes and I don't, so do what you want.
Jonathan?
Sir.
Um, I was thinking the same thing. I, I, I think um, I understand everything that's been said here tonight. I agree with uh, the points that were made, but what we have been doing up to now has been really, really good. And so um, I think we continue with that philosophy. So that's kind of where I am too in that. And just keep on trucking.
Well, uh, Greg, um, I question what's good. We've spent a half a million going on, six hundred fifty thousand. We want some more money thrown into the pot. So I don't know how good that is, how big a threat a hundred fifty thousand dollars is when they're gonna fight us. We know that. They know that we're not going to roll over. And I, but I don't think, again, I don't think that this belongs in this particular uh, resolution because of what a resolution is supposed to, supposed to do, is supposed to express uh, all of the things that we say here. And I think if it's a budget amendment we need to do, I think we need to put it out and debate it and I'm sure it would pass.
I, I think it's, this has been a good discussion. And um, I would suggest we've gotten sort of both sides of it out and it may be a good time to go ahead and vote. and it may be a good time to go ahead and vote on the motion to amend.
Can I, can I make one more comment? Can we, can we change the resolution to say that, that the city council approves that we set aside the necessary funds to, to oppose the development rather than, than a specific number?
We can, but we can do it with a recognition that at some point in time, we can't just open a totally, I don't think we can open a totally broad door. I think we could do it with the concept that we do that with a budget amendment in the future.
Yeah. So I, I mean, if we say that we're, we're willing to fight it and we're willing to provide the funds, why put a specific number in there? And the thing that, that bothers me is, is again, I went back to the August statement and we've already spent $100,000 in legal fees on this through the end of August. I don't know how much more we spent.
She said 60,000.
If it's a, you know, we're looking at at least 250,000 if we spend 100.
We're not over budget. We're writing against budget.
Well, I, I didn't say we were. I just said we've spent $100,000 at this point.
Well, it sounds like we're.
Through August. So, you know, we're looking at 100 plus, 150. So we're looking at, well, maybe even the 300.
And your question is, yes, of course you can change it.
Okay.
Well, but if we've got another $60,000 bill waiting to get paid.
Another 60,000?
Yes, that's what Mr. Carter said. Then we are over budget.
So we're all, we're already.
No, I thought the bill was here. No?
The bill is here, but we haven't spent it.
Haven't paid the bill.
We haven't paid the bill because we don't have the money.
Okay, but if, if the bill's here, if we're going to pay it, we're over the resolution.
No. Not yet. It's not clear.
Okay.
That's why I haven't paid it.
Well, I, 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 I would, again, we, we are, we're opposed to the project. The resolution put it safe that and I just think we need.
Jonathan, correct some language that sent you.
Well, we got a motion to amend. If, if Dale wants to make a motion to amend, the motion to amend.
That's actually.
That would be appropriate, but be in order.
Very complicated.
Gets complicated.
Okay. I second it.
Well, what, what is the motion? To change it to whatever funds are needed or what, what's this?
Yeah. Resolve it about city council that money be set aside from the allocated Prospect City Reserve to oppose the development of subject Prospect.
Just what it says, except that instead of 150, you just save money.
Yeah. And, and I guess we should say that something about that that, that the council has to take action to make sure the budget is announced there. I don't know whether you want that, put that in a resolution, but certainly we have to act to do that.
I think we're making this really complicated, but it's a good motion and, and a motion. I don't agree with it. But I suggest we go ahead and, and have further discussion on Dale's motion. Everybody wants to speak on that. And then we move forward with the vote and then get back to the motion to amend.
Somebody said Dale's motion.
He, he did. Frank, Frank did.
Okay. So now we can vote on Dale's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
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 Kind of like three to three.
Three to three. That's what it sounds like to me.
Oh, now I get to break the talk? Yeah, I'll vote for Dale's motion. So Dale's motion carries to simply say, instead of 150,000, we say city fund. So how's that?
That's fine.
Now, now we have to move back to the motion. Frank's motion to amend.
I would throw the motion.
And now we move back to the main motion, which is to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I like the idea of having an amount of money.
We're past that.
That's it.
That ship has sailed.
Yeah.
No, if we go back to the original.
No, it's amended. It's been amended by Dale.
Motion.
Been amended by amendment for amendment.
Never mind.
All right. Let's vote on the original motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks.
All opposed. As have it. I'm going to say, I can't say I voted such and such. I didn't hear a roll. Let's do it. Sandra?
Yes.
Yes. Dale?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Dale?
What's the question?
Are you voting for the motion?
I am. Yes.
Okay. Five yeses and one abstention. Passes. All right. We have some people that want to speak to us.
John, I have a question. I, I sent an email asking for a summary of the amounts that we spent on the projects surrounding city hall, including Little Honey Creek Park. I did not get a response to that. I like, I like to know how much money we spent on this.
Hey.
Just passing it.
Oh, there. Don't worry.
Got a store in the coffee.
Yeah, on page two at the bottom, it shows the totals that have been spent in each fiscal year. For the audience's benefit, in fiscal year 2122, budget of 480,000, we spent 440 of it. And in the current fiscal year, again, out of a budget of 480,000, we had spent 100, almost, almost 150,000. Some of that shown on page one and brown, they have highlighted part, the store, the change orders for the city hall parking lot and the repairs to the area of the parking lot.
You mentioned the budget. Where, where do I find the, the budget amount? I have not seen that in any document I've looked at.
The budget was as amended in meeting in March of this year, increased the amount for parks from, I believe, 290 to 480. And then when the fiscal year ended without a new budget being enacted, that budget became, started over. So.
Okay. And this is, is to date, so it doesn't include the most recent work. Is that correct?
Foresting has more draws on their contract.
Right.
But I can't really speak to.
But this doesn't look like it includes the paving.
Oh, it does.
Paving is excluded from this. It's just the park.
Okay. Does it include the additional parking?
Yes.
It's in the standard area.
That's part of the park.
Okay, but, but the paving of both of them were done at the same time.
Yes, they were. It's more efficient.
No, I'm disputing that. I'm just looking for.
I'm just saying, yes, they were.
No, yeah, I agree. Do we have a, do we know?
Break between the segments. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
David Holmes, you have to speak to the council.
I'm David Holmes and I'm on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to publicly thank all of the citizens that helped build the playground on September 10th. We did a community build that was intentional on our part when we planned the playground because it saved the city thousands of dollars in construction. If we had had the crew that helped us or directed us actually to construct the, the playground. We had 16 citizens that came out on that Saturday. We had two council members. We had Doug Barzley and Don Gibson came out to help. And our chief of police was there. And I know from having watched him there that day, why he is the chief. Because he can hold up himself to all of the younger people that we were watching do the construction and sort of standing back and letting them do it. We also had Rick Wilson was there working and as of, of course, Ron and his crew were there. So we had a good crew. They worked from about 9:30 until about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. The people who constructed the playground did an absolutely marvelous job in terms of constructing it, but also directing us what we should do and not do. And it was more or less them saying, pick this up and bring it over here and put it in this hole and hold it while we pour the concrete in and do the rest of it. But it was a marvelous day. The people that came out to help, it, it was just a fun day to watch. And I, I think it'll be even more fun once it gets finally done and we see the kids out there playing them.
Thank you, David. John Stafford? I knew it was you.
Go ahead. I knew it had to be you or you, but I wasn't sure.
One of the three of us. I'm John Stafford. I'm a resident of Honey Creek and I live right on Westover. And I'll be glad when the project on the, on Honey Creek Drive is done because the traffic on Westover is unbelievable right now. But I want to thank you all for being sort of in unison, proposed to the LDG development because I, I don't think most of the people of Honey Creek realize, maybe most of the people in Prospect do not realize how much money has been spent to fight these guys and keep them out. And I'm not sure that, I, I wasn't really aware of all the meetings tomorrow night. I'll be there, but I just hope that, I want to thank you guys for all you've done to oppose these guys. Thank you.
One, one thing I'll mention. Your, your, your words were, were sort of opposed, were unequivocally opposed. You, you.
Expensive propositions. That's why I thought we ought to put the dollars in the resolution. People need to know that this is expensive.
All right. That concludes our agenda. Is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Return.
Yeah, I, we are finished.